I'll order the eight hundred and eighty ninth, eighty ninth special meeting of the board of directors of MSAD twenty seven. Welcome.
Keith Jandro.
Eric.
Jacob Terrio.
Eric.
Toby Jandro.
Here.
Barry Lelet. No. Gary Siblitt.
Here.
Sarah Ashley.
Here.
Caitlin Daigle.
Here.
And Gabriel Martin is not.
And we have a few adjustments.
We have two adjustments. And if you're looking at the white copy, this is the agenda we used. It has the adjustments. One of them is to add item C, approval of sewer loan financing. Just came through today that we have to decide on whether a three, four, or five year term on that sewer loan. And then item B, there was a request to have an executive session to consult with legal counsel. And because it's a special meeting, you would all need to agree to add these two agenda items.
Motion to add the two items to the agenda.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Has no one signed up for public participation? Approval of minutes for the eight hundred and eighty eighth meeting on November second.
So who?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Superintendent, Mr. Portman.
I just wanted to take a few minutes and review our hybrid and remote learning models. We did speak about this two weeks ago when we had a meeting last, but I just felt that it's necessary that we just kind of review. And you should have got a copy of that in advance when you sent out the board materials last Thursday. We've looked at, all week we've looked at both schools, how we can implement a hybrid model. It is very apparent that we would definitely have to move to the cohorts in order to get our distancing of six feet within classrooms and buses. Transportation is going to be the hang up, so I know Peter's working very hard collaborating with Mr. Coletta, Mr. Dusset, Mr. Neto, and Mr. Micho about, you know, working around that. We've come up with cohort lists that are based out of the elementary, essentially every classroom dividing them in half. And the teachers had a lot of voice and choice in how to create those groups so that there's an equal distribution of learners across the spectrum when we're looking at, you know, who's coming to school on each day. And then we had to cross check that with the students here because what we want to do is we want to make sure that families are within the same cohort. So that even though Keith's two sons go to different schools, we want them to be on the same schedule. So looking at that information across the board is definitely a lot of work, but definitely worthwhile. So we've done all that, we're finalizing those lists, and again, transportation is the last, the last item that we really want to make sure that we're not overloading one bus or another. Initially, Mr. Coletta, you know, his, his plan was to simply go essentially last name A to M is going to be cohort A, N to Z is going to be cohort B. But then you look at the majority of our M last names are, are folks that live in St. Francis and Allagash, and that bus would really not thin too much because of, of, of how many people have that last name that fits in a cohort. So relooking at that and moving things around and we're finding that we're getting there. But when I speak of cohorts, this is essentially what I mean. Your cohort A kids will come to school on Monday, cohort B kids will come to school on Tuesday. Wednesday would be a remote day for all, and then repeating on Thursday with your cohort A and cohort B for Friday. You're alternating days on Tuesdays and Thursdays or Mondays and Fridays are going to be a remote. If you're, if you're not in school, you're obviously remote. So this is the way that we've determined it's going to work best, and we feel that, that it's a solid plan. I did share with you as well that it helps with school lunching where when the kids are in school, they're getting their hot meal, and then they're going home with two days worth of lunches and breakfasts before returning to school, and the process repeats. So we feel pretty confident that that's going to be doable as well. A little bit different expectations for the K five level as compared to the six twelve level. K five level, we're calling in school days, instruction days, and home days are going to be work task days. Essentially, your teacher is front loading you with work when you're in school, sending you home with, with tasks. Obviously, the students will be checking their Google Classroom, their constructed, but having that work to do at home so that they don't have to be digitally connected while they're at home, that's going to be very difficult. Some, some work tasks might be digital connection, connectivity with certain programs, but for the most part, especially our younger grade levels. I know Mr. Neto was advocating that it be more packet based, more project based, less sitting in front of a screen for, for the youngers. And then working our way up for the middle high school, it's, it's following your class schedule on alternate days so that you continue with your, your scoping sequence of your courses. I did have some questions following the push out of this about how do we move to a hybrid? When do we decide that? And as I shared with you last week, two ways. One is if the state of Maine designates Arustic County as a yellow county. Right now, Arustic County is not, but our positivity rates continue to go up, not nearly as high as, as, you know, that the, the counties in Southern Maine, but they are creeping up. More realistically, I think if we're going to move into a hybrid model, it's because our local counts are rising. Last meeting, Sarah did ask some questions regarding the collaboration between Northern Maine Medical, Fish River Rural Health, and all of that. So I worked all week on communicating that with Peter Sidwa and Heather Pelletier, and then also communicating with UMFK. Now we have access to three dashboards. Fish River created their own dashboard, so we can monitor all three and tabulate them together. I did learn from UMFK as well that they don't, they don't double report. So if there are positive cases at Northern Maine Medical that are students, they're not, they're not necessarily double reporting that, especially with the asymptomatic cases, because that's essentially what they're really looking at. Asymptomatics are not going to the hospital, so they're picking that up on, on random tests that they're doing at the UMFK and then reporting that out on their dashboard. So I think we have a good handle. We do know realistically, there are probably some folks from the area that go to Cary Medical, or they might go, you know, to, to Press Kyle. That's something that we can't, we can't really manage right now. We, we, we can get a historical snapshot on the CDC by zip code, and we're going back and looking at that to see if we can get that. But that's, it's historical and it's really difficult to decipher between them. So looking at our local cases with Northern Maine Medical, Fish River Rural Health, and Northern Maine with UMFK, I think we've got a pretty decent handle on this. We talked about, you know, just because we reached six cases doesn't mean we're going to immediately sound the alarm and go into yellow. I think that will be a time where if we see a couple of days of rises beyond six, seven, eight, nine, that's when I'd probably reach out to you all and say, I think we're going to move to a hybrid model because... And it would be based on the collaboration that we have with, with Dr. Roberts, Dr. Hart, and Northern Maine Medical, and consultation with, you know, with our, our school nurses. We'd make that based on a medical recommendation more so than a impulse recommendation. So that's hybrid in a nutshell. Do we have any questions?
You know, like last week, I, two weeks ago, when you brought it up, I was thinking about it, like, the initial hybrid model that you presented to us a number of months ago now? Had K through four staying in person full days, like, what was the thought process for that changing to them being on off days?
We, we looked at, we, that was what we were looking at when we started putting this together, but then it became very clear that if we have essentially half of our students out at remote and half of our students in, we don't have the manpower to be able to, to, to feed kids in school among two buildings, because that was our plan, divide K through four among these two buildings to separate them. And then provide school lunches outside of school to the kids that are in remote learning, because we have to provide them lunches. We just don't have enough resources to be able to do that. That was our primary reason. Secondary reason was that creeping into a second school, so let's, let's say for, for example, we have grades three and four here in this building. We have teachers who are going to be teaching remotely in this building, so where do you displace those teachers in order to house grades three and four here? There's also another kind of check mark that we were just kind of boggling our minds around. So we ultimately moved to this plan in order to, across the grade levels, be able to, to manage school lunches, be able to manage student learning, and also create all the requirements.
So based on last year's leaving in March and coming back in the fall to take the STARS test, how did our K through fours perform? Because the reason I'm asking is that I know that Christine and I are full time parents, working parents, and I know that I'm probably going to have to work. And I'm not sure how we're going to manage having our son here every other day at home and then Wednesday. And so I, I'm just wondering, like, the work that you're asking us to do on a Tuesday, Thursday timeframe, I'm, I'm just curious if it's going to be possible?
So one of the things that we, we gathered from parent data of last spring was that they preferred front loading work, a week's worth, a week's worth of work, so that as a family, you guys can digest that into the way that is manageable for you. Obviously, if you're working, you know, Monday through Friday, the weekend probably is going to be more time to do schoolwork, and you can't do that unless you have work in advance. So that's something we're sharing with our teachers, that we'd like that preparation, a week's worth in advance, so a family can decide how they're going to do that. That's one thing that we, you know, we're trying to do. With regards to assessments, our data.
No, we saw, we always see a summer dip. So whenever kids leave the summer, they're gone for six weeks, they come back in, and usually we'll do those assessments the first couple of weeks of school, and we see that dip. Definitely more prevalent this year, and we expected that because they were gone from March all the way through to September. We've had a lot of our, our classrooms just did another benchmarking, and they saw a lot of growth. So that was, you know, very, it was good to see that because then we know that all the loss that we saw from March all the way to September wasn't going to be as difficult as we expected to be able to get back that one.
So I guess the question I'm asking is if, you know, my, my wife and myself are not excellent teachers at home, and we put all the responsibility on our kindergarten teacher to do the work for us. For example, is he going to fall behind, let's say, come next year or whenever we go back to full session? That's my biggest concern, is I don't do my due diligence and teach him.
Yeah. I, I think as a society, we're all concerned about, about all the students falling behind nationwide because of this. I, I keep in my mind, forefront of my mind, you know, we're dismissing our students at two o'clock right now. And for some folks, that's half an hour a day that's missed of instruction. I look at it as, you know what, our kids are in school. Thank God our kids are in school because so many states, so many counties, even in Maine, kids aren't in school, you know, five days a week. So hopefully, we stay as we are. But if we have to move to a hybrid, we're, we're not, we're not in anomaly. You know, we're, we're, we're where a lot of schools are right now, doing the best we can. I can report from some of my Southern Maine colleagues. They feel that the hybrid model, because the classrooms are so thinned out, those kids have so much attention during their in school days that they're making up for the lost time because it, it's really targeted instruction for those seven, eight kids in the classroom versus a classroom of twenty. You know, where you, you just have to do the best that you can. So they're not finding that the kids are really falling behind, they find that it's really manageable on that, on that hybrid day, on those hybrid days.
And not that I'm going to say we're not going to do our best, but...
I know you will.
I'm just curious, I just want to make sure, like, he's not going to be playing catch up if that's the case.
And that's why we're not going to take this lightly, we're not going to move to a hybrid or remote unless we have to.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little more concerned of a hybrid, of a, of a remote than a hybrid, to tell the truth. Because if we're not seeing the kids again like we did last March, that's a scary place to be. Hopefully, if we have to move to, to remote, it's only for two weeks at a time because we've had to react to, you know, a, a, a positive case, then we clear that up and move forward. But I'm, I'm really hopeful that we don't happen.
When's the next time point for allowing students to choose to be remote or come back to school?
They just did.
They just did.
Last week was the, was the enrollment period, if you will. We, we didn't, we didn't, we tried not to promote it too much, just because we didn't want a whole lot of movement. We did send letters to all of our current remote learners and requests to see if they wanted to come back. Vast majority are staying remote. A few, a few have come back, and they came back today, today was their first to date back.
Okay. Thanks, Ben.
Yeah.
So maybe we should base our decision on hospitalizations instead of just a bunch of asymptomatic deaths?
Right. I mean, Dr. Roberts has been really fantastic, you know, we, we, we had a little bit of a scare, not, not in this district, but a little bit of a scare last week. And I mean, really, really thoughtful guidance and really, you know, really thoughtful about all of those things, you know? And so we're really going to lean heavily on, on the medical advice and not jump to pressure from external forces. Because there's going to be pressure no matter, no matter what, we need to do what's best for kids.
I think to that end, the only thing that, because I like numbers, I'm very square, is to say that we have zero to five new cases, active cases, this is where we are. Like, it almost makes sense. Those out.
I would love to take those numbers out.
And just say like, and other, or add, and other factors.
Yeah.
This does feel like a drop dead number.
Yeah.
And that's...
And I know it's going to be fluid, but, but, and I'm okay with fluids, but you can't have fluid in numbers.
Because trust me, some, some, like, daily people say, I think we're up to six.
Right.
I think we have six. And it's, so that they're looking at the numbers.
Right.
I, I would, I would much rather get away with the numbers. But I mean, that was our original intent, was to put some numbers because we didn't know where else to go. But now that it, now that we're experiencing it, it just seems to be what's...
Like, New York City is using a percentage of the population that's, that's infected.
But that's still numbers, and like you had said, like, six, seven, eight, nine, like, as it grows, you know, there has to be trends. I mean, I don't think, I think you can make numbers say anything, and finding one number that you can hate your hat on is probably not...
Right.
Going to work. Is there any, can we change?
We can change. What I can do is throw some draft language together around this, collaborating with my colleagues, and then shoot that out to you to see if it's not a better pick.
I'd also like to see some language regarding her recommendations of our medical, local medical professional.
And that's what I'd like to advise with, I'd like to get, you know, Dr. Roberts' advice on this and see what we do with that.
Right.
Yep, absolutely.
I think that would like help bring the chat down a little.
Yeah. I...
One of the things that Dr. Roberts does, which is very helpful, when she says there are three cases, she also lists effective until, it could be till tomorrow. So you might think you have three today, but as of tomorrow, that one is no longer infectious.
Yeah.
So that also helps.
I think getting rid of the numbers would help, especially like my class. I know the seniors look at numbers all the time, obviously, because we watched what the seniors went through last year, and of course, we miss school too, and it's kind of one of those things where it's like, we'd like to be in school. So sometimes we'll be like, oh my gosh, there's five cases, like, see you guys in June or something, you know what I mean? It's like a joke, but I think it would help us.
Yeah.
Especially, and I mean, every other grade also, but speaking for my own grade, I know that would help us if we weren't like, oh my gosh, we're so close to six and had that like number in the back of our minds all the time.
Absolutely. No. I, I, I concur. So let me draft some, some language around this, and then I'll, I'll shoot that out to you after I discuss with the parties that meet. The other framework is our remote learning framework. And, and again, remote is if we move to a red, we all have to be out of school, that could be for as little as two weeks at a time because of, of, of a school positive incident that is not contained. Or it could be for community rate that, that's increasing. So with, with our framework, we really use a lot of our artifacts that we created last spring when we started to exit out. We, we created some, some core values matrices for elementary and middle high school learners specific to what remote learning looks like. We, we then went on and really honed in on what, what are some expectations across the grade levels? Because a one size fits all plan does not work, we learn it's got to be very different for the younger students compared to the, the older students. And, and this is what Julie and KN have been using as a framework. We have Julie and KN scheduled this Friday, we have our, our first workshop day on our new calendar adjustment, and KN and Julie will actually be presenting to all of our pre-K to, to five teachers on how they're surviving in remote learning, and not only surviving, how they're rocking it. And we're hoping that those success stories that they can share along with, you know, their, their stories of what they tried and didn't work is really going to help our teachers if we all have to move to remote learning. So we've got that planned this Friday, and we're very excited about that as well. But the plan does, you know, it's, it's very specific across the grade level, so you see the grade spans, you see what the expectations are, not only with work expectations, but attendance expectations, technology use expectations, you know, we, we heard from folks, we don't want our kids in front of screens all day long, we get it. We also know now that it's perfectly safe to have an exchange of materials from home and from school. Whereas back in March, we thought every package had cohort, I mean, we used up so much Lysol at my house, it doesn't make any sense. And I think everybody was just unsure about, you know, what they could touch and what they couldn't, so that's, that's there as well. And then what are the expectations for video meets with your... And then what are the expectations for video meets with your, with your teacher? Looks very different for pre-K than it does for, for middle high school. Essentially, your middle high school students are going to be following their schedule even in a remote environment. So it's not going to be like it was last year where it's, you know, it's, it's a new schedule. You're following your schedule. That's why we created blocks this year so that would be manageable. You know, Caitlin's only going to have three classes, three or four classes a day. And, and that's not going to, you know, overwhelm with seven or eight classes a day like we had last spring.
Excuse me, Ben?
Yep.
I have one concern about the responsibility of the parents or the guardians.
Sure.
To make those arrangements for the materials we brought into school.
Okay.
If we go full remote, I think last spring we were maybe utilizing the bus.
We were.
To some degree.
And we would still do that to the extent that we can. We know that if we have to move to remote, we're also going to have to move to remote lunches. So the bus transportation will be assistance for that.
All right. I'm just concerned with those families that might have transportation issues.
Yep, and, and we'll definitely not make that a hindrance. So that's essentially in a nutshell, our, our remote plan as well. It also goes into the, what's the expected behavior of our teachers. We, we, and this was created by teachers after last spring, you know, and, and we know as professionals, we have to have specific expectations. Our goal in both of these models, hybrid and remote, is to have staff onsite delivering instruction. That's what staff want. That's what they've, they've been, they've been advocating for. And that way we know that, you know, come three o'clock at the end of the teaching day, it's the end of the teaching day. And, and, you know, we're not going to be working till nine, 10 o'clock at night zooming, you know, like I think a lot of us were last spring. We really need to make sure that we take care of each other and, and we, we make things very realistic, specific to a, a working day. Any questions on either of those?
My only thought there, sixth grade is kind of a weird in-between where they don't have a lot scheduling.
Yeah.
Or the scheduling that's over there, you know, there's not a lot of them.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Nedo and I talked about, talked about this as well. We're, we're going to work with the sixth grade teachers on what's, what's the best fit for their, because even RISE has its own twist compared to the regular sixth grade. So I think we really have to work with those teachers on what's the best. You're right, it is a funky grade level, really middle school, but in an elementary school, so.
Do you want the qualifications to serve on the SAD 27 board?
And we all know that we're looking for a current board member for sub-district two. And for sub-district. And I believe we're going to be looking for a board member for sub-district three with Jake sells his house. So I know the, the chairman wanted to talk about, you know, what are some qualifications to serve on the board of directors. I, I just put a whole bunch of policies specific to, to the school board, your school board powers, your, your member authority, your expired, unexpired term fulfillment, which is one we should probably look at because it's, it's not clear on who fills a vacancy when you have sub-districts that cross town lines, which all of them do. So, uh, policy BBBE, unexpired term fulfillment, says "A municipal officer of the municipality in which the director resided shall select an interim director for the municipality or sub-district to serve until the next annual municipal election. The interim director shall serve until a successor is elected and qualified." So in Kerr's case, I reached out to both Lena and Suzie and said, "You all should collect names from sub-district two," which, and I, I gave the definition. It's all of Wallagrass and part of, uh, part of, I think Arustic, not Arustic Road, but Route 11 up to Bradbury Street and all of that. And then whoever, between those conversations, whoever you think is the best candidate, bring it to the selectmen of the town where that person resides. So I, I think that was the best way to handle that. I'll do the same thing if, if Jake's position becomes available. I'll reach out to both Suzie and Rodney and do the same thing. I think wherever the name is coming from, wherever they live, maybe it should be that selectmen board that brings the name. The only other thing that Lucy and I discussed is doing an alternate thing. And, you know, you're, the first time it's available, it's Wallagrass that recommends. The second time, it's Fort Kent. But we, we can never guarantee that a resident of that community is going to be interested. So I think just having the town managers collaborate is probably the best way to deal with it.
I don't, I don't know that it's our authority to dictate how the towns pick who's going to represent them. I think it's up to those towns to come to some sort of arrangement.
Yeah.
Amongst themselves. I can only speak from experience because I've been representing St. Francis and St. John for a while.
And Fort Kent.
That's right, and until, you know, after Eagle Lake withdrew. And the last time I had taken out nomination papers, it was agreed that it would be in St. Francis because we were the largest community. But definitely not a bad idea to switch up once in a while, but I think that's up to those communities to decide. I don't know that it's our authority to tell them what to do.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if there's somewhere, some authority that could just give them guidance. Sounds like some sort of, I hate to say it, interlocal agreement between those communities.
I think it's our policy that's determining how it's done.
You think so?
Well, it seems to be the only, the only thing in play here is our policy.
I, I know that you're one of a rare bird that has sub-districts in the state. There's not, I don't even know that there's another. I know when they, when they talk about the types of representation, they use SAD 27 as like the model child for sub-districts.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's, uh, makes things challenging.
Imagine unless we have a, I mean, unless Lena and Suzie, you know, come to blows, it's not really going to be an issue, right?
Well, if there's a good representative, representative from Fort Kent within the sub-district and Wallagrass, I, I just don't know how they're going to decide.
The way I read this, municipal officers, oh, yeah, nevermind, forget. I had to go back to the beginning of the sentence. It looked like it was the municipality in which the director resided until the end of their term. And then it's a free-for-all, I guess? I don't know.
Like if I see reside, it means I'm living in New Canada, that doesn't mean they have to come from New Canada. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I, I thought the replacement until the end of the term, it would make sense, but I guess.
Right. Municipality is associated with, municipality is a town, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, so if we follow it to the letter, you're right. If we, if we say wherever the last director resided, then it's always going to be that community.
And then if there's no one in the.
Until the next annual executive.
Yeah.
That may have been the language that was written when we had 12 members and one member represented only one municipality.
When did we change the?
Probably about five, six years ago where we did a reimportionment.
Two thousand eighteen.
This was left in two thousand.
Yeah, when Eagle Lake left.
I think you had to do one after Whitterville.
When, when Whitterville left.
And then you had to do it when Eagle Lake left.
And then when Eagle Lake left, yes. And then the reimportionment is going door to door and, and making sure you got one man, one vote representation. That's why we had to kind of carve that into Fort Kent from each direction to get the right number of votes.
And this unexpired term fulfillment policy is two thousand, so.
It may have just been missed. Yeah, yeah, it was done after that.
I think it makes sense to be what you're thinking it is though. Well, no, even though it wasn't intended, I mean, it would make sense if, that way we don't have to determine if, because Kerr was living in Wallagrass, so it would be Wallagrass. I mean, maybe that would make the most sense.
And at the time of, of their reelection, when they, when you actually have to run.
Right.
Then the, the, the voting happens in the, in the sub-district.
Right.
It can be anyone from each.
I think that's pretty straightforward.
Then the other thing we talked about was not getting into a situation like we had with Kerr. It was a conflict of interest. Because he's actually working for you in another district, but serving on the board, which creates a conflict of interest. I mean, that's why we removed the principal or the administrators from Valley Unified Board because it was a conflict of interest. So any employee of Madawaska 33 or 27 should not be eligible to be on the board because they're reporting directly to Ben. Ben is their boss.
There's some old language around school unions. Back when school unions were a thing, you've probably seen it then. And it, it used to be to have these school unions that all reported back to the same superintendent. Nobody uses school unions anymore, but the statute's still there. And if you work for any of the school unions that report to the executive that oversees all the school, school unions, you can't be on any of the other boards. So there's a parallel, but it's for a defunct form, which we've kind of, with Valley Unified, kind of created the school union forms under a different name.
Yeah.
So I, I think that makes sense. I mean, I think the legislature had that in mind with school unions and they haven't reacted to this thing because it's a new form. But I, I think you're right.
And I don't know how that would, you know, if that's something that would be covered in policy or just entry in the employee handbook as far as conflict of interest possibly.
Yeah.
I just think it would be a good practice to consider not being put in that position.
I can look into it and find out if, if there's something in statute or if there's something that we can adopt a policy for so that, yeah, I can.
It's basically the same way as with us. I mean, we can't have family members working in the school district and be on the board, so.
So do you want to have a short-term solution until you firm something up that, for the intermediate? Because potentially there's going to be two board positions being filled. Do we want to say we don't want an employee of the districts to be a replacement?
Make, I mean, what happens if we make a motion? Does that affect?
The problem is, it's the community, it's the municipality that appoints, not you, so.
Well, we're not, we're not telling anything. We're just saying we, we don't want an employee of the district, school district to be.
So I can communicate that with the town managers and say, if you have candidates in mind, the SAD 27 board would prefer that it not be a.
Someone that, someone that potentially falls within the authority of Valley Unified.
Yep.
Changing man.
Yep.
Or administration.
Or even employee reports back to them.
Right.
Sure. Thanks, Ben.
Because that would, that's, yeah, that's how it was with the school unions.
Right.
And, and the thing is, is if they put somebody on like that, then even if they say, well, we're going to do what we want. I mean, the reason we had people leave Valley Unified Board is because of that conflict. I mean, they could be getting on this board and be unable to help with Valley Unified.
Yeah.
And that would be not a good idea.
No, I think Gary makes a good point. So it's the reason why we can't hire your, your family members, you know, it's the same type of thing. Not that I'm really into any employees like you, but. I think, I think the only time that that's allowable is if, 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 if that existed before I was employed, right? So like, my wife was an employee in Madawaska before I was an employee here, so, you know, that works. Or Jean Martin was a board member at 33 before I became superintendent for them. So anytime it supersedes that, we, it's allowable.
Well, and you're not a board member.
Yeah, your wife's not a board member. Right.
Yeah.
That's true.
You're all set.
Policy review.
Uh, these were the two policies we looked at last meeting. One of them is KFB, Title I parent involvement. And this is very, very small language. You can see the red is crossed out, the green is included. And then the accompanying KFBA, and that's a school-level involvement with Title I. And again, just changing which schools we have in the district. This would be your second review.
Move to approve the second read of policies KFB and KFBA.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Items of old business.
Just an update on Valley Unified. I believe I've heard from a majority of the Valley Unified Board regarding tabling the November 23 regular meeting. And that's simply because there's really no new business. The only item for new business I have is to approve a stipend. There's been no motion in Valley Unified since the last meeting. The only motion is, is in, in respect to the think tank and ultimate mediation. I've, I've reached out to your attorney, the attorneys for Madawaska 33 and Valley Unified to organize a mediation. I believe the attorneys are collaborating on, on that. They're, they're looking at a possible date. We threw out the, the week after Thanksgiving or the week after that, so the week of November 30th or the week of December 7th as, as possible dates to organize that mediation. And I believe they're discussing that. They're also looking at, at, at who would serve best as a mediator. And, and all I can say is I'm sure they're the best people to, to determine who that would be. Some discussion around whether or not that mediation would be a Zoom mediation versus in-person depending on who you get for a mediator and where they're located out of. And, and apparently that, that actually works very well with breakout rooms where you can put, you know, put breakout rooms where your representatives are, are in a breakout room with your attorney discussing. And so are the other parties and then it, you know, the mediator bounces around from one breakout room to the other. I don't know if that's what they're going to agree on, but I know that that's being floated as well. So I just wanted to update you on that and, and as soon as I know more, I'll, I'll let you know. I know they were also discussing on whether or not all Valley Unified board members should be part of that mediation or just two representatives from each district. And I don't know what they're going to agree on or why that would make a difference, but I, I just know that that was something as well that was, that has been floated out there.
Any discussion? New business, resignation of EdTech 3 at Community High School.
We did receive a resignation. To whom it may concern is with a heavy heart that I must resign my position as EdTech 3 one-on-one at CHS. The impact of COVID-19 has hit my family pretty hard due to my higher risk level is the reason I cannot fulfill my one-to-one duties as an EdTech. I want to thank you for the opportunity you've given me last year. I truly enjoy working with a student and I love the staff here at CHS. I'm currently enrolled at Umpi in the education program and finish, will, and hope to finish in my DS and pursue teaching social studies in secondary education. It's also working with special needs students as well. Thanks again. Good luck for the rest of the school year. Sincerely, John Tricarico. I entertain a motion to accept John Tricarico's resignation.
So.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Winter sports approval.
So I don't know if you had a chance to look through that winter sports information. There's, there's quite a bit there. I, I included the, um, the, the sports guidelines for the sports that we generally offer in winter. So I have basketball, Alpine skiing, Nordic skiing. So I have basketball, Alpine skiing, Nordic skiing, and wrestling. You can see the language that they've, they've modified for, for these. But there are some just general, general points that I'd like to, to point out. The start of the season would be December seven if, if, if you approve it as a district. That's when athletes would generally, generally meet with their coach for the first time on December seventh. And the coach would give them a, a home exercise plan or a training plan. So for a week, they would do their own drill sessions at home, alone or with household members. On December fourteen would be the first start date for practices. And then would be intra, intra squad competition only. So your team playing your team only, no scrimmages with other teams. And that would go for about a month till after Christmas. On January seventh, the MPA would look at the main statistics and decide if they are going to move ahead with the competition. If they do move forward with competition, January eleven would be the start date of competition. Essentially, we would be doing a Roosted County-only competition, just like fall sports. There would be no minimum game requirements, so they would allow our teams to play up to a regular schedule. And speaking with, with Eric, he tried to schedule games with pretty much the same teams we played for soccer and maybe a few others, but try to keep it pretty regional and competitive to the size of our school. Interesting point, face coverings must be worn at all times by the athletes, coaches, officials, even during active competitions. So the thought process there was because our students have to wear face coverings in physical education in school, it would be setting a double standard to say that the basketball players would not have to because they're both indoor activities. Soccer was an outdoor activity, so they felt that that was safer. Skiing, I, I think they're going to want this just to keep warm. But no, no, face coverings must be worn with the exception of wrestling, which is interesting because wrestling is the closest contact sport, but they're saying that that would not be safe at all for the wrestler. There would be no spectators for indoor games. So our basketball games would have zero fans allowed, not mom, not dad, no one. And that's because of the fifty indoor gathering limit. Once you put your teams on the floor, on the benches, the coaching staff, the officials, you're, you're pretty much already up to fifty. So having two or three fans really didn't make any sense. That's not our rule. That's the MPA's guidance. Outdoor events would be limited to a hundred on-site. So our skiing races would be limited to a hundred on-site. During those ski races, the lodge will not be used by the teams. I don't know about spectators, but the lodge won't be used by the teams. School buses will be parked so that the athletes can warm up on the buses. And if at any time we go to a hybrid model or a remote learning model, we're not going to have sports. So sports pause when we go on hybrid or remote. That's essentially the biggest things. Again, the MPA wants to push this out early so that we have dates in advance, but they're also being realistic that when they monitor again, a couple of weeks after Christmas, they're going to possibly come back with, with an adjustment on the game schedule. Right now, it's set for January eleven, but we'll see.
Ben, what's the rule for communities that, I, I tried finding it, like if they have an outbreak? Like Caribou, for example, if they have ten active cases, are we going to go play?
No, so like Caribou, when, when they had a little outbreak, they moved to high, uh, remote. So they were not, they wouldn't be allowed to play while, as they're in remote.
Okay.
And, and you have to be clear of, of your active cases.
Okay.
Yeah, same thing would happen here if we were put in remote.
But if they're in hybrid, they can?
They're, they're in a.
They've been hybrid the whole time?
They're in a self-imposed hybrid. They're not in a, in a, in a Roosted County designated hybrid. So it's a different.
So. So if we went hybrid, but it wasn't the DOE's hybrid, it would still?
I would recommend we don't have sports because that's why we're in a hybrid.
Right.
But it wouldn't necessarily be prohibited from having sports in the.
The only time we're prohibited is if the DOE puts us in a hybrid.
Okay. I just want to point out that the wrestlers are not allowed to shake hands after the match. I was not a good wrestler, but I was a good enough wrestler to know that, that's really funny.
That's the only sport that I'm, that, that we are kind of unsure about. They did cancel football this fall for the exact reason that football is a high-risk sport. Wrestling is also a high-risk sport. In fact, it's probably even more so given the nature of what you do in wrestling. My, my concern is that. My concern is we only have one other school in Roosted County that has wrestling, that's Caribou, and everything else would be south of Roosted County. So I'm fine with wrestling against Caribou. I don't know that we should be sending our wrestlers out of county if we're not sending anybody else out of county for competition.
So if we go to hybrid, are they allowed to practice? Like, so skiing's a low risk, right? So what would be the issue with them going to press country ski?
Yeah, it says nothing about practice. It only says competition.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you would allow?
Keeping them healthy and active, I think would be a good move.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think Scott, Scott Dewas put a lot into this. I mean, even if they can't compete, I'm sure he can still work with them on training and practicing. I think he had a good, really good crew coming up and he like installed a hot water heater at my house.
Yeah.
He was telling me that he was very excited about the new.
I think they can do some great intra-squad stuff, you know, to stay busy. But and if, and if, like I said, if Caribou wants to have meetings with us, I, I think we're okay with that as long as both schools are, are safe. I don't know about outside of Roosted County, if we're not allowing anybody else outside of Roosted County.
Do we have to adhere to this one hundred percent? Or can we, as Roosted County schools, get together and say, we're not going to have our basketball players running around with masks on? I mean, that's not even realistic. And then you have the wrestlers with no mask, which is closer gun. I mean, it's just, this stuff is so out of hand. Are these guidelines or are they written in stone? We have to do it this way?
I think because you have the, the stamp of approval on not only the MPA, but the DOE, DHHS, Superintendents Association, I, I think it's the expectation that if we are going to adopt anything, it's going to be that. So that there's uniformity across the, the counties.
But I don't even think, this isn't any even set in stone, is it?
Right now, it's just a.
It's just a thought.
Well, it's, it's target December seven as your start, but get ready, things could change.
Yeah.
It just defines common sense. If that sums up.
Some of this is triggered by the governor's latest executive order that.
Yep, there's the, the no fans for sure is one, is one of them because of the fifty gathering. And then the face masks required all the time on school grounds is another headline.
Any additional discussion?
Permission to speak?
In relation to the sports?
No. Just before you adjourn.
Okay. Approval of sewer financing.
Oh, can I, can I get approval on winter sports to start practicing on December seven?
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
We didn't.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Approval of sewer loan financing.
So we just need to have your thought on, on what kind of term that you want for the loan. The loan is going to be a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars minus what we get for the, the grant, which is about ninety thousand, right Lucy?
Initially, we'd like to borrow the full amount because I really don't know when that ninety thousand's going to come in. But as soon as it comes in, I would apply towards loan. And I've already clarified that there would not be a penalty for, for paying of that section.
Lucy and I are recommending a five-year loan simply because we really don't know what the forecast is going to look like for, for subsidies in, in the upcoming years and tying ourselves to a, a larger loan. And yeah, I know it's for shorter term, but the percentage rates are, are not that far off that, you know, we're not losing ground. Your three-year loan is a two-point-three-five, your four-year loan is a two-point-four-eight, and your five-year loan is a two-point-five-nine. So relatively close in, in percentage rate. If we go with a five-year loan, we're essentially looking to pay back about twelve thousand dollars a year on our share after the ninety thousand dollars applied. Versus the three-year loan would be about twenty thousand dollars a year, correct Lucy? So we just need to get your thoughts on that and move with one of them.
Lucy, what do you think's the best bet?
I'm, I, I'd suggest a five-year because of the, the other thing that's coming to play as well is the, the Carish funds and the CRF funds are really affecting our cash flow. So fewer big-ticket items that we have in any one year. And this year, I'm already up to six or eight thousand for other costs other than the loan payment. So I'd really like to minimize the payment each year in five-year, you know, twelve thousand is manageable each year.
You could, you can always pay more, you know what I mean?
I have a, a red motion and somebody wants to.
Keith, you've been, you've been.
I'm still at that seat right there.
Hey, my lucky day. Motion to allow Maine School Admin District number twenty-seven to borrow from Kentadaan Trust Company a term loan for five years in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand at a fixed interest rate of two-point-five-nine percent. The loan will be used for the sewer rehabilitation project. Also, this motion gives Benjamin Cerua Superintendent permission to sign any documents on behalf of the school district pertaining to this law.
Yes.
No, anything. I thought you were joking.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I have a question, Lucy, because I know you check the numbers. What's the, the interest difference between the?
Once we get down to the fifty-seven, once we pay in the ninety thousand, it's probably about eight or nine hundred dollars difference each year. So it's not, it's not interchangeable. And just for your information, I put the bid out to all the, the entities that had a banking in town. Three answered back, and these were the best rates.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor? In Evans. Public participation.
So I apologize. I was kind of hoping I would hear more on your thoughts on Valley Unified. And then you would have public participation, so I guess. Can I just clarify? Are you going to mediation? Because that was kind of left up in the air after the last school board meeting. There wasn't a whole lot said about it just now.
Yes, you are.
You are.
Your name, ma'am?
What's that?
Your name, ma'am?
Ruth Bernard. So you requested the results of a petition that was circulated. I know you said you intended to review that. Has that happened with this guy?
Yes. Yeah, I shared that with all the board members.
All right, so everybody's read the letter. We're all kind of okay about it. So just a couple of questions, I guess, from my perspective. I actually live in Jake's district. Not that I want to take his chair. I have to live outside of this here. Frankly, I kind of owe you guys an apology because I was reading the school board laws and you don't technically represent us in being, they've actually kind of created a political entity out of the school board. If I understand this correctly, and you guys don't necessarily represent the opinions of people so much as the student bodies themselves. Is that accurate? Looking at you, Toby.
I show up here every month.
Are you referring to SAD or Valley Unified?
The state of Maine in general has actually, I'm just looking for the school board information first and then kind of translate that to both fronts.
We have some copies of our policies pertaining to the school board.
Yeah.
If you'd like a copy.
No, I reviewed those. I just, I think just as a general understanding point for myself, you guys are a slightly more political entity than say like Massachusetts, where you literally just represent the opinions of people in your district. Is that?
I'm not really sure, to be honest with you.
Well, we have constituents that we represent in, in the areas, the sub-districts that we represent. But ultimately, our goal is to represent what's in the best interest of the students, administration staff. Obviously, we have budgetary concerns. We have to keep mine full. But aside from that, it's not necessarily one specific item that we're here for.
And just from my own knowledge, because you guys had that school board discussion, are any of you educators or educated to be educators? I know you come to small walks of life. I'm not saying that is a bad thing. I'm just curious generally.
None of us are educators.
Are any of you familiar with the concept of a big-picture learning school?
Perhaps if you'd like to make a presentation to us, you can arrange with Ben to make one next time you come.
No, I'm just, I'm literally just trying to understand who the people on the board currently are and what your responsibilities are in relation to. So I'm just trying to gather information. There's no, there's no malice here.
But I'm not assuming malice, but you may be more fruitful if you present what you want to say and have us talk about it.
Ed, the reason I'm asking is just, my understanding is what's happened in Sanford is moderately based on that type of school. I believe the school Valley Unified is looking at is also based on Sanford's model. Am I stretching here? Can I be?
That's right.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand, like, are you aware of that type of school? Do you know how those schools work, what benefits they've reaped? I'm saying this as somebody who came to this school. When I was in school here, my freshman year, there were a hundred and twenty of us and about a hundred of us graduated. I was a kid who got kicked out of the tech center because I was in honors class and I had to make a choice. And I know you've remedied a lot of those issues. And I know it's been a lot of work for the teachers and this is 2020. I think everybody wants to give the teachers exactly what they want because we know what it means to do it ourselves at home. But I'm also just questioning, like, where are you at? Because last I knew, we didn't even have anything on the docket to go to mediation. So as a community member, I didn't get that from this meeting. I'm asking for clarification on those things. Did you take what the teachers wanted into consideration? Is that why you're going to mediation?
We factor everything in consideration. We factor in your letter, the signatures that are on it. I think you sent it to me. There was close to five hundred. Of those five hundred, there's right around a hundred that actually represent MSAD twenty-seven. The other four hundred come, well.
I'd love to review that.
There's maybe a hundred, there's maybe a hundred or so that are actually local. There's about three hundred that come from all over the United States. So I don't know if that's just like a signature dump on these.
No, just like I said when I wrote to you in the email.
Can I finish, please? So I don't know if there's like some kind of automatic signature dump on chance.org. What is very misleading on the surface when you've got a survey out there that says five hundred MSAD twenty-seven parents are supporting this when in fact there's just over twenty percent.
I, I think if you look at those, if you look at my profile, it may still say Boston or Portland. It uses your last Facebook location.
Yeah, no, I looked at every one of them, went through every one. And they're not even remotely named like around here.
I, I would love to sit with you at some point and go over this, but it, it's neither here nor there. So did you take that as a lack of support then or?
I took it as a hundred people from the area signed your letter.
Okay.
And I guess if you have a statement or something you want to continue with right now.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to find out what our position is. Are we still seeing site selection as a hard stop?
Site selection is an issue, yes.
This is what I'm trying to understand.
Well, one thing I'd like to respond to about was the Sanford Regional High. One thing I'd like to respond to about was the Sanford Regional High School and CTE Center, which myself and a fellow board member, I believe Jake, you and I both attended. Wonderful facility, great things happening down there. Great partnership with the corporations in that region. I think when you step back and you come back to the valley, you get a little bit more grounded into what can we do here in the St. John Valley in our circumstance? And what we have for corporations in our vicinity? What works in Sanford may or may not work entirely in the St. John Valley, just because of the resources available. Sanford's drawing in from all, how many, I don't know, there were several districts we're sending the students in for CTE. Yeah, so it's just, they're kind of in a different direction. They were taking a proactive approach based on what they had going on around them, as far as demographics, and what they could pull into that high school and CTE center, where we're in more of a reactionary mode with this school, pilot school. And I think people need to just keep that in mind. It's not apples to apples when you're looking at Handan Academy or Sanford Regional High School. They are doing great things there. We can obviously look at what they're doing in their model and kind of take bits and pieces of that and apply here locally, I think. I just, I think people are, a lot of people are awestruck, and I think you might have walked away from it, as I did. They're like, wow, what a, what a great thing. Obviously, it's a great thing. I just, like I said, we've got to base our decisions more on reality and needs, not necessarily wants. So that's just my opinion.
So then I only have one more question to clarify. Moving forward, we're just finishing the dream, so to speak, and then people get to vote on this again, right?
Depending how mediation goes, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
Entertainer motion to enter into executive session pursuant to one MRS A four oh five six E.
So move.
Second. Second. No, sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?